All right, I'd like to call to order this meeting of the Board of Finance for the budget presentation with standby pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
At this time, I'd like to turn the meeting over to Dan Devorsen.
Thank you very much. Good evening, everybody. Thanks for coming. Thanks for anybody who's watching at home. My name is Dan Devorsen. I'm a member of the Board of Finance. I'll be presenting the proposed budget and our thoughts at this public hearing. Colleagues from the Board of Finance as well as from the Board of Ed and some town management are here as well to answer any questions when I'm finished. So, we were working on these slides with the team and I was preparing what I was going to be talking about. I went back to last year's presentation, probably the only one, and a lot of the content that you're going to hear tonight is going to be similar to what was discussed last year. And that makes sense because this budget process is really a continuation of a long-term plan and a long-term process that we've been working on for several years. So, if what you hear is a repeat, that's a good thing because we're executing on what we've told you in the past. The agenda for the evening, we had the pledge. I'm going to talk a little bit about dates. We'll talk about our goals and concerns, spend a little bit of time on that, not a ton, but I think the thought process of what went into all of this is important. Then we'll dig into the details of the expenditures, the revenue, talk about the mill rate very quickly. And any comment? They will go home. So, the dates that we need to keep in mind today is the public hearing, that's what we're doing right now. After this hearing, we have the ability as a Board of Finance to continue to listen and deliberate and make changes if it is needed. We have done so in the past for new learnings, for new information that comes from the state, things like that. So, we will potentially do that. We do have our normal meeting on April 12th, and I'm sure the budget would be a topic there as well. To the extent that we need any additional public hearings, those have to be completed by the 18th, and then we submit to the town clerk the final budget on the 22nd. On May 2nd, we'll have our annual town meeting to discuss this again and then set the referendum date again, most likely assuming passes for November for May 16. Then, assuming that passes a referendum, we set the mill rate by May 31st, and we're happy. So, there's multiple priorities that we need to think about when we're talking about the financial management of the town, short-term, medium-term, and long-term, and we spend a lot of time on that. Obviously, we need to properly fund the annual requirements of the town and the school. We also have to manage the debt and the capital plans and do all of that in an efficient and affordable manner for the taxpayers. It's really, it's a constant dance between the short-term needs and the long-term goals and priorities. Again, short-term funding the needs and responsible use of that one-time revenue. Some years, there is no one-time revenue. This year, we have a couple of pockets of one-time, non-recurring revenue that you want to apply appropriately to similarly one-time or non-recurring expenses so that you're match-funding your revenues and your expenses. In the long-term, you know, we're going to, I'm going to talk a bit in the next few slides about the fund balance and the debt burden, and that's very important. So, you have to balance the short-term and the long-term. Both are equally important, but you want to avoid the instant gratification of applying everything to short-term and then setting yourself up for a problem down the road. And that's what we tried to do. So, these budget concerns are very much the same as what you've heard from us in the past, last year. Inflation continues to be something that everybody, everybody in the country, everybody in the world has to consider when they're budgeting, and impacts your fixed costs or capital requirements. And it puts stress on being able to sustainably, is that a word, grow your growth objectives. Second, you know, we've been talking about this debt bubble for a while, and here we are, continuing managing through that debt bubble. We are, we have, we developed a plan, we're executing that plan, and now it's important not to extend the length of that outside debt service burden. We spent a good amount of time, and we always do, on making sure that we understand the near-term areas of capital need and to budget for those appropriately with reserves or current cash, again, to make sure that when a fire truck needs to be bought or a track needs to be replaced, we don't have a million-dollar one-time hit that we plan for that ahead of time. So, to the extent that we have that knowledge ahead of time, we can plan. And then, like I said again, you'll hear this term a lot, one-time revenue, plan the procedure for that. Let's dig into these goals a little bit more. Goal one, of course, is to properly fund all aspects of the government. Education, the government, the public safety, culture and recreation, all need funding, of course. And we met with all the department heads, I think primarily all the department heads, to understand their needs. And let me just say, you know, by definition, everybody can't be above average, but we have a hell of a, a hell of a group of people managing the town, and we got a lot of information from which to work for. And I just want to make sure that we express that. The people who presented to us did a really good job and expressed themselves quite well. Where was I? So, we reviewed all of that. We deliberated, had robust discussions about what we could afford, what the priorities needed to be, and we present those tonight. Obviously, a special concentration on expenses that are outside of anybody's control, the inflation for fuel, health insurance, these are, these are costs, and they impact the budget, and we had to pay attention to them. And then, per town policy and best practice, we have a contingency of 50 basis points, 0.5% of the total budget to cover a note. Lots of talk at our meetings and at every meeting about the debt, debt management, and really rightfully so. We need to, as Tara said in the town meeting, reduce the reliance on bonded debt and increase capital cash spending. And I think that we are constantly concentrating on that, and we're doing that. And by maintaining our assets, funding our liabilities out of cash as much as, as much as we can. So, how do we meet this goal? We continue to increase the portion of capital paid out of cash. We were able to utilize one-time revenue to fund a number of capital expenses. We are funding reserves. That is the first thing, personally, the first thing that I look at when I see, when I get the budget document, is I flip to the back, look at the reserves that need to be spent. That's the first item that gets knocked down, and then I look at the rest. Because if you're funding the reserves, you're planning for the future. We talked at the town meeting about the Capital Committee, which does a great job, and we have to give them the attention to do their work and then listen to them. And I think we're doing that, and then continuing to fund our retirement liabilities. So, that was the good news, that we have a plan for debt and that we're paying attention to it. This chart, however, is what we're managing to. This is a chart of total debt to revenue for all the AAA towns in Connecticut. And you see, we're all the way to the right in terms of total debt. Not total, not total debt, total debt as compared to the budget. So, we all acknowledge that we have an elevated level of debt, and that was, that shouldn't be a surprise. That was known by everybody, should be known by everybody, when the school was recommended, unanimously recommended by all the boards in town, and approved it referendum by a two-to-one margin. It was known that for a period of time, we were going to have an elevated level of debt, and that we were going to be pushing the limits on total leverage. So, not a surprise, but it is a fact. This is where we are. There are, and we have to, we have to work through it. There are a number of projects needed in the coming years, big capital projects that we need to work towards, and we have to manage and plan for that. We're beginning to do that. It starts with long-term planning from all constituents to sit down and figure it out. And we started doing that a couple of weeks ago with an all-hands meeting at that town hall that the Board of Finance led, that Mr. Rooney championed and did a great job. And so, that was the first step. But in the meantime, while we plan two, five, 10 years out, we can do things currently to ease the burden as well, and that's what we're doing. We're increasing the amount of cash spent versus bonds spent every year. I'm going to say it again, we're creating and maintaining and funding reserves. We're making sure that we bond appropriately when we have to bond, only over the useful life and not extending it. And like I said, the Capital Committee and the debt policy that we're working on, we have to adhere to it. Very, very important. A little bit more, we talked about the capital 15 minutes ago, so I don't need to go through it in too much detail. The $2.28 million in tax dollars is what we're talking about in the cash budget. The other sources were outlined in what Ms. Carr put up earlier, so I don't have to go through in too much detail. But this covers, the cash is covering the paving and the reserves, and the one-time revenue is covering things like the Greenway and the number of projects, vehicles, things like that. All right, that's debt. The other long-term need and goal is the general fund. And we're going to spend a minute or two on that because we need to continually reinforce to everybody, including ourselves, how important the general fund is, and maintaining that general fund and growing that general fund, how important that is to achieve all of our goals. We have to continue to add to the fund and maintain a percentage to keep pace with our AAA peers here in the state. And that's both to meet rating agency requirements for, to maximize our interest rate on debt, minimize our interest rate on debt. And the healthy fund balances are just, they're the best way, that's the best practice to manage the town, manage cash flow, manage interest rates. But honestly, I'd probably flip those. You do it because it's the right thing to do, and then you get the rating agency support. You don't do it because of the rating agency. You do it because it's proper management. So, how do we continue to do that? We're prioritizing. We have a surplus of revenue generally on an annual basis. This year, again, a number of one-time sources, and we balance that between growing the general fund, long-term, and funding needs, short-term. We have a general fund policy that we are adhering to for sustained fund growth. What does this say? So, we started including this chart last year, which shows our history of the fund balance compared to the budget, and I think it should be a permanent part of this presentation because it really, it's just as important as the mill rate is the general fund, in my mind. So, I'd like to see this as a permanent part. Best practice would be to have two months of cash working capital in the general fund, about 16%. We're not there yet. We're straight under 15. You can see that, you know, it's been steadily increasing over the last number of years. You know, back 10, 15 years ago, the rating agency requirements weren't as high, so it looks like we were really low, and we were a lot lower than we are today, but we weren't meeting the requirements back then, don't get me wrong, but we're still chasing them today. The last number of years, we've made a conscious effort to grow those, and we're in good shape, but we're still chasing them. Listen on the right here are, you know, some of the advantages of having the proper fund balance. Talked about, about interest rates. We also can, this gets in the weeds, but we can stop issuing bands, which are really one-year money, to fund working capital needs that you're paying, paying interest on. If you can not do that and pay that out of your bank account, you save, you save money. And then, we also, because we have cash in the bank, we've been earning pretty good revenue. So, we've been able to grow the general fund, maintain it, and we're still able to use some of that revenue to offset current year obligations. So, this just lists, in addition to that general fund growth that we've used the surplus for, that we've also used surplus for the benefit on an annual basis where we're offsetting the budget with surplus to fund needs, capital expenses or operational expenses. And in the future years, we intend to continue to do that, to offset large temporary debt service increases using the debt load. I think that this balance that I've talked about for the last five or 10 minutes is a particular strength of this Board of Finance and this management team, and it's a discipline that will hopefully stick around on after work on. Again, that was the good news, but we still have work to do. As of 6:30 2022, the last time the books were closed, well, the last year the books were closed and audited, we were ninth from the bottom on this list of 30 towns in terms of general fund as a percent. The good news is last year, we were eighth from the bottom, so I'll take that as a win, but we still have work to do. When we close June 23, we should at least maintain this, if not grow it, because like I said, we have surplus that we'll be applying to the general fund. We don't know exactly what that will be until those books are closed and we get, we get an actual report, but we're in good shape. All right, let's dig into the numbers for this year. Enough of the back and forth. So, this is the summary of the expenditures in this year's budget for fiscal year 2324. We have a total expense budget of $82.4 million. That's broken down, town operations is 21.9, Board of Ed is 50.5, debt service 7.7, that number is, you know, again, known, and like we just said at the last meeting, $2.29 million of total capital. There's going to be some common themes across these next few slides, that most of these increases, the large majority of these increases are driven by contractual or equivalent salary increases. That's, you know, every year, you know, we're X percent, 70%, 80% salary, and that's the same this year. Other increases, like I said, that are beyond our control, gas, heating, oil, health insurance, and other inflation measures. And then, we're also phasing in the new school security positions that were approved by the town last summer, and that also impacts the expense increases. All right, so the town... So, most, again, most of the, most of the town increases is the contractual and the contractual salary increases and the similar increases to those that aren't contractual, but, you know, are appropriate. Fuel, oil, insurance, we have to manage those as much as possible, lock in when we can, but inflation impacts everyone. Then there are other additional expenses this year, the maintenance of CES as we, as we work through that transition, the new security staff. We did add a health, a position in the Health and Welfare Department, a new FT, which was desperately needed. Didn't realize quite how desperately needed, but it was added. And then, we have a contingency that continues to be the correct ratio to manage the items. For the education, the Board of Ed, again, driven almost entirely by status quo impacts of salary, insurance, transportation, and the like. Oops, sorry about that. You still good? Yep. We're also in year two of a phased investment plan that the Board of Ed put in place, which is being funded by a combination of some short-term grant fundings and then phased-in annual increases in investment, and we're working with them. The Board of Ed, Board of Finance collaboration, communication is really in a very healthy place, and we're working through their needs over the next several years, and this is, like I said, execution of what we've been planning for. Debt service, dropping my pages. Debt service is what it is, includes interest on all the, all the school bonding. In this current budget proposal, we're going to begin principal payments on the first half of the bonds. Next year, we're going to have to add the second half into the debt service, so, and that's, that's the bubble that we've been talking about. We had copy releases as a line item. I don't think we need to spend too much time on that. And once again, you notice the zero, the dashes in the band interest line, which is appropriate to point out that that is a real savings and reason that we're able to not have that expense and issue bands is because our general fund is in the right position. So, call back to that. Capital expenditures, we've talked about. I'll spend, you know, this, this presentation is specifically about the cash portion of the, of the, of the capital, which is all of it, because there is no bonding proposed in this current budget. The cash, the cash from the taxes is applied exclusively to paving the roads and funding reserves, and then we have the one-time uses of revenue for the balance of the needs. This is a repeat of the slide that was shown a little while ago. The revenue summary, a boring one, but just as important. Won't go through this line by line, but the, really, the, the one thing that jumps out on this slide is the large interest earnings number, the 1,000% increase in interest earnings. That's a number you don't see very often in budgeting. And that's because fortuitous combination of timing of bonding and timing of interest earned in our bank accounts creates a bit of a windfall that we are able to use those earnings. It's not going to be, this is not a permanent thing. We can't, we can't assume that that level of revenue is going to be permanent. So, when I talk about one-time revenue, that's an example of a bit of a benefit that we can apply, but you have to do it responsibly, and that's what we've done. Most of the other revenues are all based on five-year averages and known facts, and Marsha does a great job of projecting that within very minimal discrepancies. So, that's how the budget is built. Leads to a mill rate. You flow all that through, through everything. Look at the revenues, you look at the expenses, you look at the grand list, you flow it all through, and that results in a mill rate increase that's being proposed for approval of 3.98%. That is the end result of where we, where we, where we, the work we did. The work we did this year, which as I started with, is a continuation of the work we did previously and a preview of the work we're getting continued to do. It's a, it's a, this is not a budget in a vacuum, this is part of a plan. And with that, I will open it up to questions and allow the rest of my colleagues to participate in the fun.
Mr. Lassner? Do you want me to come up there?
Yes.
Yeah, sure.
Howard Lassner, 116th hour. Just, I've got a couple of questions and a couple of points. First point is historically, and I don't know if it was last year we stopped doing it, but historically at this public hearing, there'd be copies of the budget for people to look at. So, I would suggest, you know, next year, if you have a second public hearing. The other thing, you know, never mind, I wanted to congratulate you. I think this is the earliest I can remember having a public hearing on the budget. It's usually sometime in the first two weeks in April, so, so that's great. Yeah, I wanted to ask about the track. I mean, I talked to Steve a little bit earlier, because I remember Steve Dunn, you know, spearheaded the first renovation of that track back in the 90s. And then subsequently, I think there's been a couple of times where we've redone this track, and it just strikes me, it's $2.3 million is a lot. And what's the life of that track? And have we benchmarked that against other towns? To see if we're being, you know, responsible in terms of the total cost?
Brianna?
I knew that was going to happen. Should have called out sick. I apologize. I speak loud enough without a mic, you all know that. Hello? Put it on. Oh, God, the awkwardness is a lifetime high. Okay. So, I believe, I didn't have my book, so I apologize. I worked late and was a little up and down. I believe the useful life of the track was, I want to say in between 10 and 15 years, and then what we do is, as a Capital Committee, is we'll continue to plan for the next one. So, it was, in the book, there was, oh, thank you, there was put together by the, oh, no, that's the Capital, in the Capital book, that's fine. It, the past director of the Parks and Rec had put it together for us. I know that it had been a part and had been asked for for quite some time. I know from personal experience that it definitely needs to be replaced. I brought on it, and so...
I'm not questioning it.
But it seemed, you know, I, I, there was the one quote, and it had been brought up several years, and it was a recent quote unlike others. So, we felt that that, being that one big project that we wanted to put in this year was the one to choose as a Capital Committee.
It'll still get run through the proper vetting and go through the purchasing area. It'll run through the Board of Selectment, and Tara's office will oversee it. So, it'll have controls on it. It's a number now based on our best estimate. The Capital Committee and Brianna could probably forward the notes from when you discussed that to you, Howard, as well, and put them up there. So, you can see the process that it went through. It went through, how many people are on your committee?
Six.
Six people's decision-making as well, and it's not, that number is the best quote we have now, but it'll still go through the proper purchasing, proper RFQ process, and it could be less.
I recall years ago, we talked about putting, I think when we put it in originally, we talked about putting up a reserve of, you know, to be 100,000 a year or something like that, so that when it comes, we know that there's depreciation.
And we tried to keep up with all those reserves.
So, yeah, I would encourage us to try to...
As the Capital Committee, we did, there were not new quotes on several items that were asked for, which we did not approve because they weren't current quotes, and this one was, was from November of 2022, so we felt that it was a fair enough quote to feel good to put through.
I think that to further the answer, the Capital Committee is just another control as well that we have in place to get through this, so I think the controls are there.
Okay. The due diligence of being, that's what, that's the essence of my question.
Yes, it is.
The other issue I have or question, I know I sent you guys an email about a month ago. Historically, you know, I know it's a small amount, but we give money to things like Brookfield Cares, Ability Beyond, hospice, et cetera, and historically, at least up until 2019, those were articulated as individual line items in the budget. I don't know why it got, now it's consolidated into one number. And statutorily, we're required to deliver to the state a line item budget that articulates what we're going to spend the money on. If you consolidate that money into one line item, then we have no visibility and no transparency into what it's, what we're actually voting on. And I would encourage you to break that out into separate line items. I mean, I have, I have an example. Here's, here's the 2019 budget for that department, so I know we talked about that. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
And, you know, I do congratulate you guys, and I think the budget's fine.
Thank you. I'll take it. Thank you. Thank you. Any other questions? Harry, sorry, Bob, I didn't see you first, but Harry, please.
Harry Sheikery, 7th Long Meadow Hill Road, I am also City Selectman. I will be brief. I want to thank the Board of Finance. I know how hard it is. Thank you for your work. I'd like to thank my two colleagues and partners, first selectwoman Tara Carr and Steve. Thank you for all the work and effort. It's not an easy job. It's, more people need to know what it's like to go through a process. I want to start my comments real quick, and I will be brief. I am a huge proponent of having a new town center with a library in Park and Rec. I have a young daughter and two children who love the library. I have a wife who's an avid reader. My concern is that, my thought is that we need to address the police station as our next major capital endeavor. And the police station, to my knowledge now, has a kind of a format, a study that was done on a remodeling slash addition and also a new bill. I think that that project will move quicker into getting into a position to where it can start to be a real process. I think that, I don't think, I know that the study will be considerably less than, you know, a 30,000 or 40,000 or 50,000-town center, and I think it will move much quicker. I would feel much more comfortable that, once that is in order, and once we've got that process going, to start to begin to work on the town center. Kevin Archer had a great, we had a nice, it was quite a talk yesterday, but a thought of, once we have that study moving backwards and going into center school, piece by piece, but first off, I feel that any money we put into reserve should go into reserve for the, for the police station. I also was thinking that... I also was thinking that this $50 appropriation, or not appropriation, but going into the reserve fund should have been a question on the budget rather than just put into the capital, because it is a new, it is a new reserve. And people are not going to know that it's in, 99% of people aren't going to know what's in there. Not that anybody's trying to hide anything or not cover anything up, but I just thought that that would have been a better process. It may not be, I'm not a finance person. But I would highly suggest that we start to move forward and get the police station to where we, they're on a three-phase evaluation right now. They're going to have to make renovations. It's going to be, I don't know if it's mandated, but it's going to be part of their accreditation. And I would love to see us put this money, I think it would be a very short-term. I think, again, I think it would be much quicker for us to get the money to do their study and get that process going, and then back that up with it. Because I am in complete support of a new town center with a library and with Park and Rec there. And again, I want to thank you, Board of Finance, for your effort.
I'll comment to that. I think Tara's meeting yesterday was a great start, although it was a little hectic. I think that was a great start of the process. And I think Tara mentioned it very well, that we can maybe do things in parallel. We've just got to let the capital committee get the data, look at it, process it, and plan properly. We aren't broke, but we can't spend money, you know, crazy. And I think, again, the start of the process was the Board of Selectmen meeting yesterday to understand the needs and to get a defined plan. And then we can run it through the capital committee, I think. And then we can see where it fits. We have Ryan's model that outlines against the, not the laws, but the best practices of 3% of the general fund, 8% to 10% of the operating budget. We presented that, as Tara said in her presentation on March 7. I think that with proper management, leadership, guidance, everything can be accomplished within the means of what we need if we do it properly and plan for it. And Dan mentioned that it's a proper planning process. If you properly plan, the outcome will come out to very well. Harry, I get your concerns about the $50,000, the police station. We're looking at the big picture, Harry. I mean, the $50,000 is in the library fund now, but we also know the police station's coming. It's a known, we're trying to figure out how to get there. So it's a matter of leadership and planning and figuring it out. We could have just put it in for, you're right, the police station. The police station, I think, is a little bit ahead of the library in their planning stages. I think they have further along plans, and I think that was brought up at the meeting yesterday as well, that they already have some set plans that we can review or that the capital committee, the library isn't quite there yet, I don't think. So I think that was part of the thought process of getting the library to where it needs to be. So on that note, Dan?
Yeah, so I just want to add, as I was fumbling through my pages, I neglected to point out in the capital pages that there is a $50,000 reserve, as Harry pointed out, for the library study, which is the first step in a study that's going to be needed for, as Glenn said, something that is going to have to be done. So we're getting ready. Doesn't mean we can't do something for the police station. Quite honestly, the budget we got from the Selectmen didn't have anything for the police station. So we're not going to, I mean, if it's not there, we don't know about it. Or we don't, it's not that it's going to be a current thing, so...
Before you go, I wanted, it wasn't an oversight on the Selectmen either. It just wasn't there. There was not an oversight on Tara's department. It just wasn't asked for.
Right, exactly.
They didn't request it in capital either, so it was, you know...
So we're, so in favor, need to plan for all of it. It all needs to get done. It all will get done with planning and with proper budget. So the $50,000 for the library is part of that overall, the first step.
Anybody else want to add to this while we're... All right, Harry, go ahead. Well, Bob was next, sorry.
Howard, don't leave yet. I was going to comment on something you want to hear.
Something's cut off a moment ago.
Stick around for one second. I'll make it quick.
Hold on, there's no video.
It's, this computer seems like it's frozen up. You're still recording here, so I can post online later on. So we might not be going out to the outside right now.
Hey, Bob Beldon, 7th Red Barn Lane. Just for the record, I'm also chairman of the Board of Education, and I also served on the capital committee. I have two comments I'd like to make. First is on Mr. Lasser's question on the track. And I don't think the conversation was really clear. The $2.4 million is for refurbishing the track, completely resurfacing the football field, which, if I remember, is like a million dollars by itself, and redoing the end zones with a whole new configuration for the track and field competition. So it's a much more significant than just the track. And I just wanted to make sure that was clear for everybody.
Same.
Okay. And as chairman of the Board of Education, I just wanted to express the board's thanks for the partnership that the Board of Finance has given. You guys have been great listeners, and we've had a very active and fair discussion. We've taken some reductions. We tried hard to make sure we have a very responsible Board of Education budget. And you guys have been great in terms of giving us support once we got to that point. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other questions? Oh, sorry, Tara. That was my bad.
Hi again, Tara Carr, 54, Indian Trail. First of all, I was wondering if, last year at this time, we were really kind of trying to figure out the ARPA. So I was wondering if you could speak to that for the public good? And then I'll recall what else I was going to ask. Oh, I know, the reserves, which you touched on a little bit when speaking about the library study. But if you could also just maybe articulate a little bit about the plan for the reserves? And then the third thing, if you don't mind, is human capital investment, which through your budget process, I tried to articulate how important that is. And without a solid plan, we will lose good people. Thank you.
All right. On the first one, the ARPA, we've utilized some of that money to, the one-time revenue, as Dan stated, to offset some of the debt bubble. We're allowed to, by law, to take up to a certain amount of money that didn't have to go into the ARPA guidelines, that we could move into a revenue stream. So we've used 1.9 million of that towards the, over the years, in the pockets of money that we call the one-time revenues. So over the few years, we have stretched and used that to offset the debt bubble. As you saw on Dan's presentation, the debt went from $5 million, the debt service from $5 million to $7 million. If we had put that into the budget, every $800,000 is 1%. So when you start to look at $800,000 is 1%, you're going to be up 2% off the gap, which we'd have to increase. So that 3.98 number would be 5.98 without the use of the one-time revenue. So on the ARPA point of view, that's where we stood. On the second, what was your second? Reserves. We have needs like fire trucks, we have needs that were, the fields, that we know are coming up. So instead of not funding the reserves, we get ahead of it. We put money away each year, so we're not going to get hit with a one-time hit of a million dollar for a fire truck. We look at it as if we put, and we've carefully planned out with the center fire, if we put $80,000 away each of the next few years, when the new truck comes, we don't have to bond anything. It's already paid for. We've already paid, it's kept that money in savings and paid for it. So when the need comes, we're ready to pay for it. So by little chunks and putting money into these reserves, we're planning ahead, like Dan said. We're utilizing instead of bonding everything. If you noticed in the bonding, and we did a bonding presentation, we used to bond everything. And all those little things would add up into a big pile of money. And then when a big need comes along, like the school that we all agreed to, like Dan said, it puts us at over the $100 million in debt, long-term debt. So we got to limit the loan numbers and put cash reserves in, so when these things do come up, we're ready to tackle them, we're prepared. Dan made a very clear statement, planning is everything. Plan, and you will produce, and that's where we're going. As for the human capital, we can talk about this all the time, but I do believe we do invest in human capital. 80% of our employees are above average paid in all the area towns. That was a survey that was provided to us by the first selectwoman. So the numbers that were provided to us, unless you bring in Greenwich, Darien, New Canaan, Wilton towns that we're not going to compete with, we have invested in the human capital. What we didn't invest in this year was adding of bodies, because we couldn't add overheads. And we haven't clearly defined those needs. When it was presented to us, it wasn't clearly defined. We didn't say no. We put money into the part-time needs. We addressed some of those needs, and there wasn't a clear-cut plan to go forward. So to us, we had to invest in human capital. Again, 80% of our employees are above average paid of all the area towns. That is in a survey provided to us by the first selectwoman. That is raw data. Maybe the job descriptions don't line up, maybe, but we haven't been presented with those. We've been presented with raw numbers. And again, if you look at departments, and departments, if you take Newtown and compare them to Brookfield, we do invest in the human capital. If you take Brookfield versus New Milford, we do invest in human capital. So I actually think that was sort of an unfair question. And going forward, I think that needs to be, we asked for a salary study to be done last year's budget, it wasn't done. So we didn't even get a salary study that we asked for to invest in the human capital, which is still outgoing, that the Board of Finance has now said, going to put out the RFQ for. So I still believe that was an unfair question. And it wasn't addressed during the whole year, it wasn't addressed. So we're trying to address it. We're trying to get a survey in place. We're trying to understand job descriptions. We just didn't fully fund two positions. And I think the positions that we're talking about is $20,000. So, thank you.
I apologize if you feel it was an unfair question, but just for clarity, 80% that you said of all surrounding area towns, that that survey, you know, does not encompass all the surrounding towns. So if that number is correct, which I'm still not sure it is, there's 20% you're suggesting where there's gaps. And it's not just about this budget year, Mr. Rooney. It's about a plan for the future. So that is my question. Human capital investment is an investment. That we have incredible employees of the town, and they need to, their salaries, because the 2.25% blanket annual increase is in the bottom four of 40 towns. There are towns that are paying 3.5% increases, 4% and 4 and 1/4. We are at the bottom of the barrel. And I am just suggesting, as we look at years to come, we also need to address human capital. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments?
Right, 10 seconds.
We need it recorded.
Yeah, I just want you to hear it.
I'm still Harry Schaker. In defense of the library people and the library, we said twice tonight that we were talking about the library. And in their defense, the program that we're talking about is a community center with a library and a park and rec. Because when you label this, when we label it as the library, you know, I'm trying to give it a fair shake as we can. So rather, you know, mention it as a library project, it's not the library project. I think that's going to be much better for the program, you know, when we address it that way. The other thing was that, it was mentioned that there was nothing from the Selectmen's office as far as a reserve for the police station, but there also was a request for the community center slash library slash park and rec program. So, thank you.
Harry, I'd like to clarify, it was a department request from the library. We listened to all departments. We deliberated with all departments. And I believe the library came to us with a department request for that money. So again, the Board of Selectmen deliberates and gives us a recommendation to budget. However, then we go back to each department and have our meetings with each department, and the library came to us and asked for the $150,000 in their presentation. The police did not come to us and ask us for any money in their presentation.
I'm just saying, it was not a recommendation from the Board of Selectmen or a reserve for either of those.
No, it wasn't a recommendation by the Board of Selectmen. However, it was a recommendation by the department.
And I usually...
And the police did not recommend? Okay. All right, any other questions? Okay, first of all, I'd like to thank Dan for the presentation tonight. He did an awesome job. He really articulates the strategy and the plan and the process going forward. And with that, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn. Do I have a second?
I have a second.
All those in favor? Aye. Thank you.